It's seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Please, everyone turn off their cell phones. Or put on silent, please.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary Ann, can you do the roll call?
Ms. Ruska, Dr. Keen.
Here.
Ms. Seero.
Here.
Mr. Smithing.
Here.
Ms. Townard.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Grichin.
Mr. Grichin's on the phone tonight. He's out of town for business.
Just in order to have somebody run the meeting tonight while Mr. Grichin calls in from work,
can I get a motion to elect Dr. Keen as the president pro temp for tonight's meeting?
I make a motion that we appoint John Keen president pro temp for August 8th, 2017.
A second?
Second.
Mary Ann?
Ms. Ruska, Dr. Keen.
Yes.
Ms. Seero.
Yes.
Mr. Smithing.
Yes.
Ms. Townard.
Yes.
Mr. Grichin. Yes. Wonderful.
President's report, Gary, do you have anything you want to report out on?
Nothing to report.
Dr. Keen is president pro temp. I want to offer you the courtesy, is there anything you want to report on?
Not at this time, thank you.
All right. Superintendent's report, curriculum advisory council, Mary Ann is in the process of scheduling a meeting for the end of August to review course proposals for the 18, 19 school year. We do those a year in advance. We'll also look at some preliminary district goal data in regards to test scores and AP scores before the formal report is presented to the board. Facilities advisory council, there's no update. The project update will be, I'll provide that under the life safety and capital improvements. But the track has been opened up to the public this week. The signage was posted. Rockefeller is open and we are, should be all completed, the project should be completed this weekend so that we're ready for the first day of school next week. Personnel advisory, I had a brief conference call with Dr. Keen and Ms. Ruska and we can touch on the personnel item that we discussed this evening when we go into closed session. Policy advisory council, I have no updates at this time and there were no packets received from the IASB.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, Dr. Skankis.
Let's move this up if we can.
The bond presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move the bond presentation to the next item on the agenda.
Elizabeth Hennessy, formerly of William Blair, is now with Raymond James. William Blair announced somewhat abruptly after our meeting in July that they were getting out of the municipal bond market and so...
All right. Take this William Blair one and go on.
Yeah, you could toss that one. And Ms. Hennessy has moved over to Raymond James and I'll let her provide a brief update on that. We updated the board packet this afternoon with the presentation you're receiving hard copy of so that you can refer either to Board Book or the hard copy. Mr. Grichin, the updated report is in Board Book. It has the Raymond James logo on it.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Skankis. So just to update you on that, William Blair determined kind of unexpectedly that it was going to exit the municipal bond business entirely on July 18th. So we had our last day on July 31st and on Monday I started with my team at Raymond James. So it's been a little bit of a whirlwind for us, but I'm confident that we are in a good place at a firm that is really going to value public finance and be very stable for Illinois issuers. It is, last year in 2016, the number seventh ranked public finance firm in the country in terms of volume of municipal bond issues. So it's, William Blair was, I think, number 23 or something. And importantly, it was number two in the nation with regard to the issuance of bonds for K-12 districts. So I think it's very focused in general obligation municipal bonds and I'm happy to report that we are gainfully employed there. So the other good news about, if you can find any good news in all this, is that because William Blair is getting out of the business, they were generous in letting us access our files, so all of the records that we've kept for the district since we began working with you back in, I believe it was 2007, are intact.
That's good news.
Yeah.
And before Liz starts, you'll see an attachment under her report in Board Book. You do not have a hard copy in front of you. It's called the G-17. And so I know one of the board members submitted a question that we had an agreement with Liz under William Blair. Do we need to do another agreement under Raymond James? So we sent an email today acknowledging that we're working with Liz Hennessy as our underwriter and an engagement email, but we said the board could not take formal action until September. Scott will, from now until September, just review that G-17 and make sure it's exactly the same agreement that we were under with Elizabeth and for Willie, from when she was with William Blair.
Yeah. And I guarantee you there will be no cost difference.
And let, Gary, I don't know if you heard that, she guaranteed there'll be no cost difference, if not, it will be better for us.
That's correct.
I like the word "better."
Gary, Laura's just joined us.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay. So just picking up where we left off last meeting in July, looking at the financing options and market update, I'll just briefly say that I've taken back a lot of your comments and questions. We were going to look at some additional options, put some additional metrics in the presentation and those are included here. So, and I've added a few more options too. So not to overwhelm you, the options are all in the same theme, looking at the refunding, which is of course a wonderful savings opportunity, and then $2 million of life safety, $3 million of working cash and some variations on that. So let's go to page four and look at the market update again. You know, we've had a very, we've been trading within a range. The market's been strong. The blue line is that 20-year AAA rated municipal market data index that reflects the largest states across the nation that are rated AAA and the 10-year is a similar for the 10-year maturing bond. And we look at where your bonds were issued in 2015. Our low point was the Brexit. We had rates go up very quickly at the time of the U.S. presidential election when President Trump was elected. We had a March rate hike, a June rate hike, and now we expect a December rate hike is what's kind of baked in to the future here. But interest rates have been kind of stable. The thing that of course is affecting us right now for Illinois school districts is the fact that we don't have a resolution on the funding plan for Senate Bill 1. So even though the market's good, we want to get through that decision point, which we hope, as I know you do, that it will be soon. Let's go to page five. This is the yield curve and this looks at interest rates from year one through year 30. And the current MMD yield curve is second to the flattest as it's been in the past six years. And what flat means is that longer-term rates are low and really the second lowest in the last six years, but short-term rates have come up. And again, that's because the Federal Reserve has increased that short-term Fed funds rate three times and is now, is expected to do it again, but it affects that short end of the yield curve. Shouldn't hurt you too badly because the bonds that we're looking at refunding are more in the 10-year range where rates are somewhat low. So let's go on to the financing plan from here. Page seven is the outstanding debt service. That's a principal and interest. And what we did to try to make this hopefully a little clearer for everybody is to put a letter above the columns so you can see how different things are calculated. So column A is equalized assessed valuation and that does reflect the district's increase up to $749 million with the 2016 EAV. So that was an increase. B is the debt service extension base. This is part of the tax limitation law and the debt service extension base is the maximum amount of principal and interest that the district can pay back on non-referendum bonds in any year. So it was determined in 1994, simply under the tax cap, they said whatever you levy for principal and interest for non-referendum bonds like working cash or life safety bonds in that year, 1994 levy year, you can go ahead and continue to issue bonds and use that amount to pay those bonds back. So it's a limitation and the philosophy is that whatever you had in '94, you can keep on levying, if you have bonds you need to pay off, you just can't go beyond that. Then in 2009, they added a CPI factor onto that. So now, as you can see, in 2016, that debt base, debt service extension base went up by .7%. In 2017, it will go up by 2.1%. And then going forward, we've assumed 1.5%. We can revisit this though as, you know, time goes on because if we get a tax freeze, there's some versions of that bill that might affect that and make it zero for a few years. But 1.5% we think is a conservative assumption in that the Fed and the government is targeting and seeing more or less a 2% CPI. So we want to be a little below that, a little conservative on our assumption going forward. Going across the columns, we've got C then, which is the non-referendum current debt service. So this is a current principal and interest amount that's being paid and as you can see it's about a million a year or so. And again, that's the amount annually that cannot exceed that debt service extension base, which is B. And the bonds that make up those non-referendum bonds are the Series 2015 A life safety bonds. Uh, that...
So if we issue new bonds... Keep this very simple. Column C cannot exceed column B.
Right. And if you go to column F on the far right, that's B minus C. So that shows you what additional principal and interest on these non-referendum bonds you could pay off based, based on your current situation. Column D reflects referendum approved bonds and those include the Series 2015 B bonds, which refunded the Series 2006 referendum approved bond, so they're still considered referendum bonds, and the 2007 B bonds. And those are the bonds we're looking at refunding here for savings coming up on their call date, December 1 of 2017. So if you add column C and D together, that gives you the total debt service being paid back by the taxpayers through the tax levy in the bond and interest fund. And if you take that total debt service annual amount and you divide it by the equalized assessed valuation times 100, you get the tax rate, the bond and interest part of the tax rate. So the tax rate, you know, is made up of all the operating funds, Ed Fund, the O and M and all those funds. The bond and interest fund is a separate levy on top of that. So it's part of the overall tax levy. And so right now, it's at about 69.5 cents.
Anybody have any questions? Lot of this is review from what we covered last month. Ms. Hennessy, based on the feedback from some of the board members, just tried to make it more user-friendly so when we post this online, the community can understand it. Page eight, Liz?
Page eight is the graphic of the chart you just saw. So the dark blue bars are the referendum approved debt service. The dark, the light green bars are the life safety debt service or the non-referendum debt service. And then that line, the blue line, reflects that debt service extension base, which again increases by CPI annually. And you can see there's room underneath that line. The green bars could go all the way up to that blue line, but of course they don't.
Okay. Nine?
So nine talks about the Series 2007 B bonds and the new money options we're going to talk about today. So as we, I mentioned, those 2007 B bonds are callable December 1, 2017 and can be refunded within 90 days of that call date or at earliest it can close September 1 of 2017. So you also are looking at life safety work. I know your architect submitted that to ISB for approval. You're also looking at possibly issuing working cash fund bonds. Now, working cash fund bonds have a separate statutory limit and that limit is a calculation, which I can go through with you, but it's basically 85% of the maximum education fund tax extension. Right now, for you, the net working cash bond limit is 16.4 million. So that was one of the things I think Tim asked for at our last meeting, so I wanted...
So the options we're discussing here are nowhere near our limit.
Correct. So you've got lots of room within that working cash. We're maybe looking at 3 million, so obviously a good margin there. Okay, so the options that we're going to go over are option one, just the refunding for savings alone. Option two and the three alternate option threes, consider issuing refunding and new money bonds at the same time so that the savings will offset, savings on the refunding bonds offset some of the additional cost on the life safety and possibly working cash new money bonds.
So to save time, I would ask the board, option one, which we covered back in July and we already gave permission to the architect to submit the life safety amendment, we know we gotta, I mean, so for the sake of time, do we skip option one or do you think it's okay to just have Liz touch on it to show people? Because we know we gotta do this work and we already...
Okay, skip it.
I mean, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yes.
Laura, you okay?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Keen, you okay?
So just to summarize that, the present value savings, that's 318. It's on your summary sheet.
Yes. Is this on page 10 too? Yes. So we looked at the savings on page 10. $36 a year for the owner of a $350,000 home. Over those 10 years, it totals about $359, $359. But we talked about, Dr. Keen, to try to put that in today's dollars for you, so that is $318 on a present value basis. So what it's worth in today's dollars is 318 versus 360.
And so the total net present value savings is $2,634,000.
That's correct.
That's the total gross amount for the district.
It's the present value.
Present value of those savings.
Correct.
That's our baseline, that's going to be our baseline.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Is that helping what she...
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so option two, which is refunding plus the $2 million life safety, that's on page 12.
That's on page 12 and this is pretty much just adding life safety bonds, paying them off over seven years, $2 million of life safety bonds. Very low interest rate on that. And it shows that it makes pretty much no difference to the taxpayers for the first seven years, but then in the last three years, there's about, there's that $36 savings again because the life safety bonds under column K on the left side of the page, those are paid off in seven years. So those payments offset the savings from the refunding. Yet you, when those are paid off, you get the savings then in years seven through 10. So total savings to that owner of the $350,000 home is $93 and present value is $74. If we say, look, we've got present value savings of $2,634 from the refunding, but we're now getting $2 million, our net present value savings is $634,675 at the bottom of the page.
So, I mean, if we do the $2 million in working, life safety and nothing else, taxpayers will see no increase for the first seven years and then once those are paid off, they'll see about anywhere from $74 to $93 in savings.
Yeah, for those last three years.
For those last three years.
And it's important to point out also, which we talked about last time, that in year 10, in 2026, after the referendum bonds were all paid off, then the tax rate would go to zero unless the district determined to do something else with the bonds.
And they would see a significant savings in additional...
That's right. That's 55 cent decrease and it would be about $505 on a $350,000 market value home.
Okay.
Okay.
So worst case scenario, if we only, which the board pretty much approved last week, if we only do the $2 million in life safety, it's best to pay them off in seven years to provide no impact to the taxpayer.
Correct.
Okay?
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
So that's seven years though, it's more than just the impact on the taxpayer. Is that sort of the standard timeframe for life safety or...
It's a couple things. You know, the life safety survey has to be done every 10 years, so theoretically, and I think it was done a couple years ago.
13.
13. So you want to have that payback maybe cleared out for your next life safety survey. So I think that makes sense.
Sure.
And then just the payback is a one-for-one offset too. So those are the reasons why we chose that. I mean, you could go longer or shorter, but seem to meet those criteria.
All right, Liz, this is where you're going to have to put on your, when we start talking, option 3A, 3B, 3C.
Right. Okay, so 3A, 3B and 3C are what we looked at last time and, or 3A and 3B we looked at last time and I said, I like 3C. So I brought you 3C and then I did some variations on 3C. But let's just review 3A. 3A is refunding plus $2 million life safety and $3 million working cash fund bonds. And the goal here was to try to stretch out the payback so that the impact on the taxpayer was minimal, least impactful. And you can see, when you look at the net tax rate increase or decrease, it's only about a penny for the first 10 years or zero for the first four years, about a penny the next six years. And then, because otherwise you would have been debt-free, there still are some payments on the bonds which result to about 10 cents a year. So net-net, it's an increase over that period, a 14-year period of $436 to the taxpayer. In present value, that's $310.
Over 14 years.
Over 14 years.
So they basically pay 310 in additional taxes over the course of 14 years.
That's right. But if you look at that tax rate, you can see it's pretty stable at that 69.70 level and then it drops down in 2027. So from a real impact, a taxpayer might not notice that at all, but you need to know that you are extending debt four years past where it otherwise would be paid off. That's why there is in fact a net cost.
But that net cost is, it doesn't show in here, is actually less than what they're currently paying for them.
Exactly.
So they will still see some savings possibly.
Absolutely. In fact, they will see instead of a 55 cent decrease in 2027, it would be only 50 cents still. It's $454 on a $350,000 home in that year, 2027. It just doesn't go down to zero.
And so we could take out $3 million in working cash. Are these capital or taxable?
These are all for capital. So remember our conversation last time? If you borrow working cash funds on a tax-exempt basis, it has to be used for capital projects. If you borrow it on a taxable basis, you can use it either for capital projects or operating expenses if you need to.
So when I first look at your sheet here, and I'm, just so the board understands, I'm trying to ask some general questions to make sure what the common viewer would maybe think when they're watching this. When I first looked at this sheet and I see the 436 in the bottom right-hand corner, it looks like borrowing this money is actually costing the taxpayer an additional $436 over 14 years. But what you're telling me is they're actually still going to see a savings on their tax bill.
It's still going to cost them $436 versus not doing those new bonds.
Right.
Because there is interest. And that's one thing about this 14-year schedule. It is, costs more interest because we're keeping the bonds out longer.
Okay.
Than some of the other options we've looked at. But you're right. Practically, will they feel that impact? Probably not because number one, the refunding is offsetting the impact of the first 10 years and then the last 10 years because all the bonds are gone at that time, there's a 50 cent decrease. It would be a bigger decrease if we didn't have these bonds, but they would not really feel an impact because...
Their tax bill's not going to go up. Am I safe in saying that?
That's, that's true, yes.
So that, even though it...
It's just higher than they otherwise would have paid.
So instead of saving a larger amount of money, they're not saving as much, but their tax bill is not changing.
Correct. Not going up.
Not going up.
So here, our net present value savings is our savings of the $2,634 plus $5 million. So net present value savings is actually a cost. So page 15 is a graphic of this and you can see the blue bars, light blue bars, are the $2 million life safety bonds. The orange bars are the working cash and you can see how they extend those four years beyond, but you also see the big dip from 2026 to 27. So I think that's what, you know, we're talking about.
Any board member have any questions on this?
I'm missing something here. Okay, just look at option 3A versus 3B.
On the summary?
Look, interest cost on new money, okay, the present value is the same for bold 3A and 3B, net present value. But the total interest cost on the new bonds, for 3A is 1.5 million and for 3B it's $450,000. So shouldn't that be present, shouldn't that difference be present valued to something? To make it equivalent to the present value total that the average taxpayer is going to pay, which is basically $19 for the average taxpayer?
Well, the net present value savings just refers to the savings on the refunding, which is the same in every option, right? Because that does not change. Plus the current value of the new money proceed you're getting, which is the $5 million. So today's, in today's dollars, there's no difference. In future dollars, there is a difference and I think it's, you know, there is a $19 difference between that present value total to the taxpayer and I'm not exactly sure why that is, but it's just, I think it's the different, the different long-term payment structure, the interest cost over time.
Right. So I mean, this 3A and 3B are not equivalent. It's costing the district more money. So it's $19 on average or the present value of the difference, which is $1.5, $1,541,000 versus $451,000.
Yes.
So the present value of the $900,000, I guess that's the number that's...
That's the future value.
That's the number that's missing here and in terms of us as a district, that's the number that I'd be interested in knowing.
So taking the interest cost.
Because that's basically the difference between those two alternatives summed up. And we've got it for the individual homeowner, but, so the present value of $900,000 between those two options.
Okay.
I think that number's missing.
So can we have her go through, because you're on the summary page and so maybe we don't lose the audience?
Yeah. Because I think for the present value, I was just trying to be simplistic in terms of what you're getting today in today's dollars versus...
No, I think you're correct. It's just, I mean, Gary might be able to help me out on this, but please go ahead.
So, it's B, the lower interest rate. So, B is two million in life safety, three million in working cash.
The same dollars up on...
Same dollars, except you're doing a seven-year scale.
Seven-year payback, yeah, on three B. So, for both the working cash and life safety, the working cash is a little shorter than the life safety because we want to regain that life safety authority a little sooner. So...
So, Liz, the...
So, that's kind of why I said, gosh, you know, we're trying to make this option. Honestly, I would rather just get rid of three B, because I don't think, I just think it confuses the matter. It's a bit shorter amortization than three C, but it's an increase in the first ten, first six years, and then a decrease to the taxpayers in the last three years. It's just a different way of arranging the repayment. So, I'm not sure why you'd want to do that. I think we used it as an offset to three A.
So, as our consultant, you're saying this is really not in our best interest?
I just don't think it makes a lot of sense in your consideration. I mean, three A is, you know, the long, more expensive interest option. I would turn your attention to three C, which I think is, makes sense, because it's, if we're looking at an increase, which we are when we look at the two million and the three million payback versus just the two million life safety, which I think makes sense on the seven years, if we do them both over ten years and make them the same payback as when your referendum bonds, then you can see an even increase or decrease in each year, and you don't have that up in some years, down in the other. So, in this case, you're getting your five million, again, three million tax-exempt for projects, and you have a net increase versus the refunding of four cents, which is thirty-four dollars a year on the home. All your bonds, then, are maturing at the same time in 2026, and you have that nice drop. In this case, it's a sixty-three cent drop, including the non-referendum bonds. And the total cost, you know, for this option, which I think is a fair representation of what you're trying to accomplish with the two million and the three million, is three-hundred-and-forty dollars, or present value of three-hundred-and-one. So... So, that is that. And this three C has less interest cost than option three A, slightly more than three B, but it has an even impact. And if you look at the graph on the next page, you can see very clearly that all your bonds kind of fall off at the same time, same point in time.
So, if the board were to do capital working cash dollars, it's in its best interest either to do A or C.
Yes.
In your professional opinion, would be C makes the most sense?
Yes. Yes. Even though it's a slight tax increase on an annual basis, it's cheaper overall in interest. All your bonds are paid off at the same time.
Okay.
So, that's kind of what I summarized on page twenty. And it also leaves room in the debt service extension base if you need to do additional funding for any reason between now and then, should some catastrophic thing happen, or we continue to have state problems. That's the thing that three B didn't. Three B didn't leave you any room in that debt service extension base in those first few years. And then, as I mentioned, three C, the debt is retired at the same time as the referendum bonds. So, let me just pause there and see if you agree with me on three C versus three A for the five million proceeds.
Anybody have questions or concerns?
Gary, are you still with us?
I'm still here.
Okay.
Laura?
I like three C. I mean, it's consistent, and it gives us that extra option and saves us from having to go back out if we do the two and the three all at once for the capital funds.
Correct. So, three C is still all capital.
Right.
So, three C is all capital. Now, when she go, the, the option of three C one...
Yep. Three C one is the same as three C, except the working cash bonds are issued on a taxable basis. That's one of the things we talked about last time.
And when you say taxable, it's not taxable to us or to the taxpayer. It's taxable to the people buying the bonds.
That's correct. So, the purchasers of those bonds will have to pay income tax on the income, the interest earnings. If they're tax-exempt, they do not.
But the yellow, so, the impact to our taxpayers is exactly the same?
Yeah, it's pretty darn close, and the reason is, you know, it's just not that much. So, where you really see the difference is in the interest rate. Instead of two-fifty-one, which is a tax-exempt rate, which you can see on the two million, it's two-point-nine-three.
But it's still pretty much a four percent increase across the board.
Four percent increase, it's like, I think, we go up a dollar for the taxpayers, thirty-five dollars versus thirty-four.
And that option gives the district some flexibility in the event pension cost shifts, or if there's any issues, or if we had to make a lease payment. Does that give you more flexibility? I know that was one thing...
It does, absolutely.
We were looking into that a little bit with, you were going to check the bond council...
Yeah.
On that. If the district was ever to get lucky to lease any property, can they do that under the capital working cash, or does it have to be under the tax-exempt working cash? Obviously, the tax exempt...
The taxable can go either way.
Right. So, if the district wanted to lease property or pay off a license, they could do that under the taxable.
Yes.
Could they do that under the capital? That was where we were...
That's right. I need to get back to you on that. I'm sorry. There was a few things that went on after that meeting.
No, I got you.
So...
I got you.
I will definitely make a note right here.
Because I think that's an important thing for the board, to know.
So, the question is, can you make tax, can you make lease payments on a building or property...
Correct.
With the proceeds of a tax-exempt working cash bonds?
Correct.
Yeah.
If a local municipality or another taxing body said, hey, we have this land, and you could put a soccer field on it, but we can't sell it to you, we can only lease it to you, or pay a license to you.
Right.
And the district wanted to use that money. That's a hypothetical. There is no situation like that right now, but...
Okay.
We're always looking to expand our property access because we're landlocked.
So, I'll get back to you on that. My, my experience tells me that you could for the first three years, but then you just have to watch what you do in terms of investing that money after the next three years. So, you would have to make sure you don't invest that money that you got from the bond proceeds at a yield that's higher than the yield you're paying, a tax-exempt yield on the bonds.
Who helps us with that, who goes through the county?
The bond council will give you a...
If we go through the township treasurer, though?
They'll have to monitor it. But interest rates are so low, it's unlikely that that would happen right now.
Okay.
But we would have to monitor it.
I have a comment. So, the, there's a seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand-dollar difference in interest rate between the taxable and non-taxable, but it gives us a greater degree of freedom to use that three million dollars. Because seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Can I speak up a little louder, Liz?
Yes.
Did you hear her, Gary? She said yes.
Yes, yes, I heard.
So, we're going to, we can let Liz go through the summary page, which is on page twenty-three.
Yep. And three C two was four million, all working cash? I don't know if that even makes sense now, because you already did submit your life safety, right?
Yeah, I think, I think the board feels the most comfortable, just from my hearing. I'll let the rest of the board that's present tonight. We know we have two million of life safety work submitted, and we know whether the, if we went through a petition phase or not, we know that work needs to be done. So, my recommendation to the board would be, let's not mess with that two, whatever gets approved by the state. We should do life safety bonds for that amount, so we know if something goes wrong or if the petition period goes wrong, we could still make the repairs that are needed to the district.
Got it.
And we're not on any folding. So, I, three C two, to me, is not realistic. It's, you know, transparency that I would, I would think the board would want to achieve would be, bond out for life safety, what's life safety, and then consider our options with working cash. So, I'm thinking C one or three C are our two best options.
And three C one gives you the extra flexibility for a minor cost.
Right. Three C one gives us the flexibility, so if we, we can do whatever we need to do to survive...
Right.
As a district. The, the board doing the working cash, the life safety, the board's gone through that. There is no petition period. So, if the board decides, we should, the finance council will probably meet, maybe we'll have another meeting, or if not, by that September meeting, the board should engage in a thorough discussion and invite the public to come and give comments or listen. But you would probably want some type of answer by September, because...
September twelfth. So, if we turn to the financing schedule...
That's the sheet that's not in the packet?
It's not in the packet. Sorry, Gary. So... Yeah. So, what we've got is, on August eighth, you reviewed the life safety and options, and you submitted to ISB. For your September twelfth meeting, we'd hope, maybe you've got enough information to make a decision and a recommendation on one of these options, and if so, we would discuss that and move forward with the resolution of intent to issue working cash bonds. So, that's the legal document that allows you to start what's called the petition period. So, once that resolution's approved...
So, whether it's capital or taxable working cash, we need to do that after the twelfth?
That's correct.
Okay.
Then, we would publish that notice of intent and a notice of public hearing in the landmark, because you also need a public hearing on the issue of both working cash bonds and life safety bonds. So, that would also occur on September thirteenth. We'd try to get it in the landmark or thereabouts.
Do we need the public hearing on the issuing of the life safety bonds?
Yes.
Even if there's no pavement or playground equipment?
Yes.
Okay. And we did that last time for these other amendments, correct?
We did, indeed.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We did those extra hearings as well for those specific projects.
Because of the pavement, right.
So, then, that would be scheduled for your committee of the whole meeting on September twenty-six, the public hearing, published, of course, and posted at the district office and on the website. The petition period would end October twelfth, presuming we get it in the paper on September thirteenth. Then, you would receive the parameters, life safety, working cash bond resolutions, and the refunding resolutions in your board packet for consideration by the board on October tenth. In the meantime, we would set forth our meeting with Standard and Poor's to re-up the district's bond rating, which is currently double A-plus. That would bring us into the market probably around the week of October eighteenth, and close the bond issue, get your bond proceeds on October thirty-first.
And there's some benefit of issuing both the working cash and life safety at the same time?
And refunding.
And refunding?
Yes.
Because then we're not paying separate costs to legal councils and...
Rating agency fees. Right. We want to try to consolidate that if possible.
So, the board roughly has a month to either call me, or if they want to petition Gary to do a special meeting, or if they need to call, send in questions to me to ask you anything that they're not thinking of now. So, when they come on the twelfth, we should be able to have a thorough discussion and kind of lay out there. It's either three C, three C one, or just do the life safety. Is that a pretty good summary? Everybody okay?
So, Liz, is there a difference between the notice requirements for taxable versus non-taxable working cash?
No difference.
Okay.
Does anybody want to take a look at page twenty-three real quick, since Liz did that and just kind of summarized? And I think that's where Dr. Keen's questions were coming from.
So, it's a real quick summary of all of the options. As we mentioned, one is just the refunding alone. Two is the refunding with just two million of life safety. So, you can see, you've got the, the bond proceeds in that second set of rows, working cash for capital projects only, or working cash for operations or capital projects. And three A is that long fourteen-year repayment. Option three B is a seven-year payment, repayment where we use up the debt service extension base, which we, I recommend we kind of not do that one to leave you extra flexibility. Three C is the ten-year repayment of both life safety and working cash. Three C one is also ten-year repayment, but the working cash is taxable, so a little higher interest cost. And then, three C two is the four million, which I think we determined was not, that was four million just working cash if we were going to skip the life safety and give yourself funds for capital in that case.
So, if you're voting as a board, obviously, you can vote for anything, but we would prefer your choices be either two, three C, or three C one. Two is just life safety. Three C is life safety and capital working cash. And three C one is life safety, taxable working cash.
So, for three C, the ten-year payback, what's our cushion for additional debt service? Is that on one of these columns?
It's not on the columns, but it is in the chart.
Okay.
And if you go back to page eighteen, and you look at remaining debt service extension base capacity, which is right in the middle, column D, you can see you've got about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year for the next four years, then it goes up to three-twenty-four, then up to a million-three after, and it jumps up to a million-three-fifty-five after the 2015 life safety bonds are paid off. So, it gives you a good amount of flexibility, both now and then when those bonds are paid off, versus three B.
Yeah, the seven-year, there was basically three thousand dollars or whatever. It's basically nothing there.
Took us down enough.
So, in case we have to borrow more, we have, I could see the logic behind that, like you said, Laura.
Liz, it would be important for you tonight or tomorrow morning, when you get back to the office, if you could email this schedule...
You bet.
To Mary Ann, so she could add it to the packet before it gets posted publicly. And I'd ask that you'd submit the watermark or something in the header or footer that says draft, to make sure it's clear it's a draft.
Sure.
So, no one would assume that this is the schedule we're sticking to. And under, where you have the landmark as the newspaper, I mean, the district switches between the landmark and the suburban life. We can alternate.
Okay.
So, if you want to put district newspaper, that may be a little more general.
Sure.
Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Hennessey? Gina, you okay?
Yeah, good.
Gary?
I'm fine.
Ramona, Laura, Wes?
Thank you, Liz.
All right.
Thank you.
Great job updating us. I'll be in touch.
Thanks for having me. Okay, great.
All right, now we got to skip back.
Go back to the principal's report. Kristin?
So, today was the first day of a two-day new staff orientation for anyone new to the building this year to learn about the building procedures that we have in place, and then for the teachers to meet their mentor teacher. We're really excited to be able to expand the teacher mentoring program to a teacher's first and second year at RB this year. And over the summer, we worked with the teacher committee, had over ten teachers on it, to shape the second year of the program, and then to refine what was in place for the first year. Summer residency was held for three days this year, and each day was successful. We made some slight changes after the first day to increase efficiency, and we got a lot... lot of positive informal feedback. And we also will be sending out a survey to all the parents to get some formal feedback in regards to how we can continue to refine that process for the future. Last night, we had the freshman family welcome night, which is hosted by the PTO, which is an opportunity for incoming freshman families and also transfer students to meet the administration and to learn more about the parent groups. And then a lot of students volunteer upperclassmen to come in and give tours to the freshmen during that time as well. We had a huge turnout, we had probably the biggest turnout we've had in the four years that we have facilitated that event, so we're very excited for that. On Monday, all of our staff returned for our first institute day of the year, and Tuesday, school begins at 8:00 AM for freshmen and 10:00 AM for the other students. So we're looking forward to having all of the staff and students back into the building and meeting the class of 2021. Just an upcoming event, Open House, will be on Wednesday, August 30th, at 7:00 PM, and we'll be sending more information out via email, and it'll be on our website as well. Tonight, I also have three reports under the principals' report. The first one is the transfer student report. You received a hard copy of that, and that was added to your packets today, so that we had the most current numbers. So you can see the first chart on the top outlines the number of transferring students that we have to date. So we currently have 51 transfer students, and you can see that's pretty similar to two years ago. This number does include some of our freshmen from our feeder schools that did not participate in the registration process, and so we removed them from the system because we had called them multiple times and weren't sure that they were coming, and now they have decided to come to RB. So there are some of those students that are factored in there. We've had 20 students transfer out of RB for various reasons. Again, that's pretty consistent to what we had two years ago at this time. The next chart kind of outlines the net gain of transfer students to date. As you're comparing year to year, please note that the 2014, 15, 15, 16, and 16, 17 are using the September numbers, and we have numbers that are just a month short of that. So right now, we have a net gain of 31 transfer students. So our current enrollment, kids that we expect to see on Tuesday, is 1,580. And our projected enrollment for the year that we provided to the board back in November was 1,636 students. So we're about off right now by 56 students, but I'm pretty confident that, once the school year starts, we'll get more transfer students. We usually get more all the way up through Labor Day, is usually when we level off. So I'll be providing another update to the board in September. Just some other notes on the bottom, we have about 59 families that haven't completed the residency process that we anticipated because they were returning students. Last year, at this time, it was about 63, so we continue to do personal phone calls. I'd say most of those students end up returning and some don't. And we have four students that are also have begun the paperwork to transfer into RB, but aren't quite through the process yet. Before I move on, are there any questions regarding that report?
So what do we do with these 59 families? Just call them up, do you go do the house visits, or check them, or what?
So we've sent out multiple, like, general phone blasts to all 59 parents, and now we're starting making personal phone calls to try to get them before the start of the school year. We'll grab a majority of them before the start of the school year, and then some will trickle in after the first couple of days of school.
And if they don't report after the first couple of days, we make them inactive and assume they're not returning, correct? What's usually your cutoff for that? Two weeks?
Typically 10 days.
10 days, okay.
The next report, which is in the board packet, is the professional development report. So this is a report that we provide twice a year at the end of each semester. So the attached report outlines the professional development funds that we received from Title I and Title II, which are federal grant money, and we explain how we've allocated them in each semester and over the summer. And then, new this year, is the unclaimed tuition reimbursement funds. So I'll go through each page briefly. So on the first page is the Title I funds. Title I funds vary from year to year, because we can allocate Title I funds for other purposes outside of professional development as well. So as you can see, we had $1,593 for Title I professional development, and we spent about $945. So that remaining Title I money that was unused can roll over into the next fiscal year. On the next page, we have the Title II funds. And for our purposes, as we receive requests, we categorize them by different priorities within the district. So that's the first column, all the way to the left, with technology and common core, AP conferences, and then school and department goals. So you can see, primarily, a lot of that money was spent throughout the first semester. Last year, we received around $17,000, and we spent 14, so that $3,295 will roll over into the next fiscal year. And then lastly, which is new this year, per the contract, the administration was able to apply any unused tuition reimbursement dollars to staff development initiatives for the remaining months of the fiscal year. So if it wasn't used by the end of June 30th, we wouldn't be able to roll that over into the next fiscal year. So this is new, and as you can see, we were able to provide a lot of great opportunities to the staff. A lot of AP institutes, and then as well, the administration and the instructional coaches were able to do a lot of collaboration regarding Danielson Training, which is our evaluation system, and then also the instructional coaching model in general. So we had about $30,000 to spend towards that, and we were able to allocate roughly around 25. Are there questions on the professional development?
And answered Mr. Walsh's one question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So can I just ask, so teachers then, if there's, they have a desire to attend a workshop, or do they just submit a request, and if there's money available, they get to go?
Mm-hmm. And so we have that process at the start of the school year, typically from primarily Title II funds. And then after the first round, we open it up towards the end of the first semester. And then in March, when we had the unused tuition funds, we opened it up again for a request.
Is there a limit as to how many times a teacher can request?
There's not. We try to look, depending on the number of requests, to make sure that if there's somebody new, that they have a little more priority than somebody who has already gone to something.
Is this, sorry, is this use it or lose it type thing? We are able to roll it over, some of it over?
The stuff from the tuition reimbursement, as of June 30th, if it's not used, it goes into the district's fund balance, it does not roll into the next year's budget.
So the contract says we may spend it, or we have?
The contract says that we have to spend it within that fiscal year. And it said for building initiatives or for teacher professional development. So we put some money aside to work with the new instructional coaches, and with the leadership team, and we dedicated a majority of it to AP and teachers doing summer curriculum projects and things like that.
And I would say this year too, especially being the first year, but this always happens in some capacity, teachers will sign up or have the intention to go to a professional development opportunity, and will allocate funds for that, and then something will change, and they won't be able to go. And so sometimes then, we'll have a slight difference in what we thought we were going to spend and what we actually spent.
The historical perspective that this was brought up during bargaining was that the contract for several years going back, several contracts ago, always had a general number of 50,000 a year will be budgeted for teacher tuition reimbursement. And so what the teachers are saying is, you know, if you're already budgeting that money, even though that might not be being used for tuition reimbursement, that could provide the district extra money to use for teacher development and program development and some things like that. So that was something that was agreed upon just in the last collective bargaining.
So my question was, on the far left, it says money available. That not, that is not necessarily what you received from the government because of the rollovers, right?
Are you on page?
For Title II, that was the money that we received.
It was, the exact amount.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And so then, same thing for number, on page nine, it's the total, 30,940 was unused tuition reimbursement.
Correct.
You have some people here to present tonight, Kristen, just to be courteous of your time?
Yes. So lastly, we have the district goal report. So at the next three Board of Education meetings, we'll be reporting out on the district goals and the eight different performance indicators. So tonight will be engagement rates and attendance. Then at the following meeting, September 12th, we'll discuss graduation and matriculation data, and then the following, we'll discuss the remaining two performance indicators, which are ACT and AP. So here to report out tonight is Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, Dave Mannet, and Assistant Principal of Athletics, Tom Jolwin. Since they reported out in June on attendance, and that report hasn't, the numbers haven't changed and the information hasn't changed, we've provided it in the board packet for you, but they're going to focus their presentation solely on the engagement rates.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Kristen. Good evening, board. Today, we're going to review engagement data from last year, which included participation numbers from over 35 clubs and activities and over 26 athletic offerings. So the first chart that you'll see is overall engagement, which includes an extracurricular activity and sports. For this year, engagement percentage was up from 63 last year to 66%. Our district goal is 70%. We're inching our way up closer. This is the highest percentage we've seen in several years, so we're excited about that and to report out on that. The box below the first chart, we broke down each class, and I wanted to include last year's data, so you can have kind of a baseline for where we're at last year and where we're at this year. And it's pretty interesting to see the breakdown for one activity, for students only involved in one activity or sport, and then to two and three. And what we saw, if you look at the totals at the bottom, not a significant difference in the number of students that are just in one activity. We saw an increase in our juniors there slightly. And then if you move into students involved in two activities, we actually decreased there by around 14 or so. But what we're really excited about is our students that are really getting involved here and reaching out more than just two, so they may be in three or so. And we saw over 100 increase there at that level. So that's what we want, I think. And we're just, we had a meeting before this, and we're talking to some of our club sponsors about branching out and really diversifying yourself, not only as an athlete, but as someone that's going to be well-rounded heading into college and having those experiences. And I know athletic directors talk about that, you know, no longer can we just focus in on one sport, and to really buff up your skills in any sport, you really need to diversify that experience. And so, over 100, that's where we're at, and we want to continue to grow that. Overall, if you look at the numbers from last year, we're up at about 70 students. We did grow our population last year, so we want to take that into consideration as well. But overall, 66%, we're excited about that, and we'll continue our efforts on our end to promote engagement through marketing efforts, through increased activities, diverse activities that our club sponsors can get involved in. Before we break out the sport and athletic numbers, I just want to talk briefly here. So we had roughly 339 students participate in a club or activity only, and there was 540 students that did not participate in an extracurricular activity. So it's our focus this year to really hone in on those students, see what's going on, why are they, why aren't they not involved in anything? We're going to do that through a survey, and then feel out how we can connect them into our sponsors and experiences here on the school. You want to talk about your numbers?
Yeah, the numbers for the athletics and sports there, 737 students participated in a sport, and then there's a breakdown of whether it was one sport, two sports, or three sports. How that compares to last year, the total number of roster spots last year was about 1070, if you add everybody up in every sport. This year was about 1023. So it's about a drop of 50 students roster spot-wise. We saw most of that in the two-sport athletes. There was 20-some less two-sport athletes. And if you break down the individual sports, which we do during the year each season, it basically zeros in on boys' football, wrestling, and track, probably had the most significant decreases, even though those sports are doing very well, they're prospering. In fact, they're high-level sports. The track was a conference champion, football's state playoff every year, wrestling, very competitive. But they did lose a few athletes in those sports, but it didn't really affect the outcome of their competition levels. They're still competing at full levels, full, you know, squads, and doing very well. So some of it can, if you want to put reasons on it, obviously football, there's a concussion worry out there all over all high schools. So when you look at all the other sports, pretty much, there's a couple up or down in each sport. There's not too many other sports that are dropping very far. We have a couple good increases. Our pomp program increased a lot. Our girls gymnastics program is starting to rebound and get more people in, a lot higher rigor as far as their competition. So we probably will never see huge, huge increases in athletic numbers without adding sports, because they're pretty much saturated in, you know, about 80% of the sports are pretty well up to the maximum number. We're competing in every sport at all levels in our conference, so we're showing a team in freshman level, sophomore, JV, varsity, whatever that sport entails. So we're doing good there. We actually only have one sport right now that isn't competing in two levels consistently, and that's out of all of our sports in every season. So that's, we look at 26 sports.
Which sport is that?
Girls golf, yeah, last year competed on the varsity level and didn't have quite, you know, a JV level to compete on. So that's, that was the one sport that, you know, isn't high on numbers. But that's unfortunately common in a lot of schools, that golf tends to have up and down, depending on the clientele, so to speak, and comes in, it does change a lot. But again, some of the things we're working on, and Dave will go into what he plans for the engagement, but underneath it, athletic participation, we have some goals there, bullet points I'll mention after Dave finishes.
Yeah.
Any questions, Gary?
No, we're okay.
Okay.
Just, so each, at the end of each year, we sit down with our sponsors, we have an end-of-the-year meeting, and we just review goals for next year. And we compile those ideas along with ideas from our principal student advisory board. It's comprised of several students in various classes. And what we saw was communication, I think that always comes down to communication, how can we give access to our students? The idea came out from the PSAB team to have our students, as they open their Chromebooks and activities calendar through our Google Chromebooks, which is another way to use our one-to-one initiative, but also to start acclimating students to an online calendar. So they'll have access to see what activities are meeting on which day, what time, what location, things like that. So that's something new that we're going to do next year. We're going to do a kiosk, we're working on that. So as they enter the building, you'll have a TV or a kiosk right there that'll show them, hey, what's going on in the building that day. And then also, I just want to make it publicly known that activities really come from our students and their interests. And last year, it was a big interest in lacrosse, and we started at zero. And I think through just the motivation and determination of families and students to get that program running, we were successful and had over 38 students run, and we held various games and held a home game that was really well-attended as well. So we always want to promote, if students have ideas to come down and see me, review the, we'll review the participation packet, and if they can get 25 or more participants signed up, we're going to run with it. And that's something that we're doing next year. It happened at the end of the year, but we're teaming up with the first organization, and we're running a robotics program next year, you guys will probably see tonight. So we're excited about all these opportunities to advance extracurricular opportunities for our students going forward, and just excited about where our numbers are at and where we're headed, so.
So the board understands, when I, within the first, Dr. Keen was here, Laura was here, Gary was here. When I ended my first year, started my second year, we wanted to start defining, you know, after I was working through some of the financial issues that the district had on its plate when I started as superintendent, we wanted to define some goals or benchmarks that every year we can measure ourselves against. And so there was some discussion amongst the board in regards to, well, what is a top-performing school in the state of Illinois? Look, a non-charter school, non-selective enrollment school look like? And so over the next three meetings, when you hear this reporting out, these were some of the goals that I came back to the board with, and these are things that we should be measuring ourselves with. So like with the engagement, best practice and research has shown that students that are involved in extracurricular activities, whether it's clubs, sports, music, whatever it may be, tend to do better in the classroom. So that's why we wanted to make sure it was important to the board and to the district that we supported our engagement in students in extracurricular activities. Attendance, which Dave will just touch on briefly next, is that there's two reasons. One, kids, you can't have higher test scores and kids be successful if they're not showing up. So we wanted to make sure that the board and the district supported the building by making sure attendance was important to the school. The other thing is your state funding formula is also based on... is also based on your average daily attendance rate. So that's why it not only serves as an economic motivator for the district, it also serves as an academic motivator. So there was a twofold purpose on that one.
And we've worked together, our department here to Student Activities Office and the Athletic Directors, with our attendance rate. And there's some incentives that they give out to their athletic teams for having high percentages for that semester. And then we do that along with our clubs and activities. And our rate last year was ninety-four-two. And the previous year was ninety-four-three. Those both were up significantly from previous years. Like I said, you know, we've had, we had a couple things throughout the year last year that impacted our overall attendance rate. But for the most part, our activity, or we want to get to ninety-five percent, we're almost there. And we're almost to our seventy percent goal. So overall, we're doing a nice job. And it's not just our efforts here. And we can't do it without the efforts of our staff. And so we want to continue to increase collaboration, give them the supports they need so that we can reach those goals, ultimately providing experiences for our students.
A lot of what we put together here is it's one big school, obviously, one big package. So when one's up five or ten and one's down ten or fifteen, you know, we were down actually twenty-eight actual students from last year, but our lacrosse is up thirty-eight. So maybe ten or twelve kids, you know, migrated from one to the other. And that's all, you know, it's not exact science. But they're here and they're participating in things. And again, we're trying to get them into whatever they want to do. And it shows up, I think, in the overall that things are leading towards increasing that. And some of the things that, in athletics, that we've been pushing and trying to continue to push is the feeder programs are always the next step to getting more students to come here and get involved because they're familiar with the school, they're familiar with some of the coaches. And as we started those feeder programs, three to five years usually is the time period where you'll start to see some major benefits where the community kids are staying in them, getting used to it, getting trained, getting skills, and deciding that they're going to be in the sport. So again, we think that's a good thing. They're also promoting feeder nights from schools that come. They can come free to watch the game, maybe put their uniforms on, things like that, so they get used to seeing their RB peers and other kids that are doing things. We're also trying to increase offerings on the freshman sophomore level for when we have enough students and certain freshmen that we have an A and a B, like our volleyball team or our basketball team, so we can get a second game against somebody. And a lot of times, that requires an extra scheduling event, which we will do because some teams in our conference don't provide those exact numbers. We'll go ahead and make a call and get another school from maybe a larger school to come over with their B program. And John touched on, one of the last things is this athletic programs initiation to get all academic notoriety through the IHSA and also through the attendance thing. So we have a dual thing going on where we're trying to give them some accolades for being, obviously, smart teams. And a lot of our teams this year qualified for the IHSA award. And then the academic attendance part of it has been very good because we found, obviously, in-season, we want our students in class so they can be in their activities and at their events. And the competition was pretty good. Pizza parties were awarded to the winners. And they kind of had a fun coaching rivalry and kid rivalry for doing that.
Any questions from the board?
Dave, this is a simple question. But average daily attendance, that's minus kids that are sick.
Correct.
So basically, with this percentage, you're sort of fighting the, you know, this one year, there's flu goes around. I mean, it's going to swap out. It could swap out your efforts to, you know, increase the average attendance, correct?
Yeah, or weather, or...
Weather, weather.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of...
Cubs Parade.
A lot of variables are going this. So in case, you know, people think, why is it ninety-nine percent? Well, on any given day, just like any employee, you're going to have a certain percentage of people that are sick.
What was it, two thousand and fifteen, Kristen, where we had the snow day? And we kept, we stayed open the one day and we had, you know, fifty percent of the kids are absent. So having one day, although parents encourage us to want to stay open, if half the parents are going to keep their kids home, that could impact us on our state aid a little bit. Last year, we saw the Cubs Parade, or this fall, we saw the Cubs Parade. We had one day in spring that was, we had several unexcused absences. So, yeah, it's, that's why we, when Mr. Mannan talked about the hero process with tired ease and with the deans going and doing home visits, and it's paid off. We've seen a good increase, almost a full percentage point, a full percentage point from when we started this in thirteen, so.
The state should have gave everybody a buy-in the Cubs Parade. They knew that was coming.
I appreciate that you are asking the kids to help you solve the problems, right? And they're, because they come, they know what they need, right? So that advisory board is awesome. Do you have a timeline for that survey? Or have you thought about that?
Yeah, we want to, first, I want to see where our transfers are at because that's a significant drop-off there. Students getting acclimated to the school typically don't because of reservations to connections or reservations to get involved. So we typically, last year, what we started was, let's connect up with them first. Let's get our transfer students to have a couple meetings. And then we'll see where our quarter data lies. And then we'll grab students that are involved in any sports or activities in the fall season. And then we'll have those meetings. So that's typically when we're going to send that out then.
Anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So we checked.
Next, Chief Financial Officer's report.
Yep.
Okay. In Board Book on page, let's see here, is that fourteen, I believe? Page fourteen starts the report. You will see the monthly highlights for the July financials, breaking down the revenue and expenditures for the district. You will notice that property taxes are starting to filter in for the new year. And then I break down some of the other money that's flowing through for the revenues. And then break down our expenditures for the month of July. On there, you'll see a big purchase service of one-point-four million. That has to do with paying earmark off for our annual purchase service agreement to get a discount. So that's why you will see a big purchase service under the expenditure. Moving on, after the individual month, will bring us to the financial statements, new year. So this is the first month reporting out on this. And it just summarizes what we got in our different funds that we had on the first page. Moving to the second page, highlighting revenue, broken out between operating and non-operating funds. Moving into the expenditures per fund, operating versus non-operating. Following the financials is the long revenue expense report for July. There was a question submitted on Board Book, page forty, in regards to transportation, why we expend the entire budget item. The item is for our annual mini-bus lease. Our mini-bus lease is approximately fifteen thousand three hundred for the two new activity buses that we have out there. Following the revenue expense report is the highlight of our student activity accounts. The only account that was in negative, that had a negative balance, was our virtual school account, which was approximately five hundred dollars in there. Once money comes in for the online school, it will be deposited into there to account for the negative balance. Then following our student activity accounts are the updated finance tracking documents for our construction projects. At our last board meeting, there was two late additions to the board bills for Nicholas. Those are reflected on the construction documents. Those totaled roughly seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-nine-sixty-one. Pretty much reflected on the fifteen document is the parking lot and tennis court. And then on the seventeen document is our roof project that is going on.
So you said you had one question submitted on financial reports? Was there anything on the revenue, or you had one on the revenue expense?
Just one on the revenue expense.
Nothing on financial reports?
No.
Nothing on student activity accounts?
No.
And nothing on the finance tracking?
No.
And you highlighted the key points from the board?
Yes.
Any questions? Good job, Scott.
Thank you.
Now we got discussion items, FOIA requests, right? Let's see. We received two FOIAs, one from NBC Five in regards to the IHSA interact concussion protocol. This went around, I think, to all the IHSA high schools. Response was emailed. And then we received another FOIA from Rich Cortez. One of twelve years of teachers and teacher assistance salary schedules for the Squeakers two thousand and six and seven through seventeen eighteen. And that was also provided via email. Police Department radio. We were notified by Police Chief Weitzel that the, his initial grant was denied for the repeater for the radios. We did meet with the police chiefs. I met with all the police chiefs last week. And we did discuss their communication dispatch center will be going in and should be up and running by late spring. And at that point in time, Riverside, Brookfield, North Riverside, and I believe McCook will all be on the same dispatch center, same band frequency, and on brand-new fiber optic lines. So after talking with some of the chiefs, we felt that it would be premature to do anything until the new dispatch center is up and running to see if, if all four departments are still having trouble getting out of the building, or parts of the building, then we should look through the four departments and the school about what needs to be done to address the situation and see if there's a cost-sharing opportunity for everybody to get involved in. But to do something now before the new dispatch center goes up, I think it would be premature. Also, Chief Weitzel has told me that he's going to resubmit the grant because we were close when they kind of ranked the radio grants or the grant submittals. And so he felt this would also provide us some time to resubmit the grant. So I have no recommendation to the board at this time because I think it's a little premature until the dispatch center is up and running, all the new fiber optic cables have been laid, and we have a chance to bring in, you know, the police on the new, once they're all on the same frequency to see how that works. Bond presentation was completed. And there's no update, I believe. I didn't receive any update from Ms. Ruska or anybody on consolidation. So that's just a placeholder, correct?
Yes, summer, sorry. I got, I'll get on it now that summer's over.
Thank you, Laura. Visitor statements.
Before you read that, just so I could see if there's...
Bob, would you like to speak?
No comment.
No comment. Okay, we have no visitors wishing to make statements at this time. Additional discussion? Any board members have any additional discussion items for today? Gary, you still there?
I'm still here.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, let's see.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. It's page one-twenty-eight.
One-twenty-eight, and then we need somebody to read the motion.
Anyone like to read the motion?
Yeah, I'll do it. Resolved at the Board of Education, township, wait, right, M-resolved, yeah, District two-oh-eight County here following actionless consent item. Approves the minutes from the open and closed meetings held July eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, as presented and amended in the August eighth, two thousand and seventeen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second, Bay Mona. Any discussion?
Mary Ann, nothing to amend it, no problems on the minutes, correct? Okay.
Okay, I guess we can go for the vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tower?
Yes.
Ms. Grichin?
Ms. Grichin?
Yes, okay. Ms. Grichin says yes. Let's see.
Old Business?
Old Business?
Life Safety and Capital Improvement. So I had our construction meeting today. Parking lot has been paved and striped. Rockefeller has been seal-coated and striped. Our signage has been hung about, you know, this is clearly off of Gulf in Washington, or excuse me, off of Gulf Road. And this is parking for Riverside Brookfield High School students and visitors. The visitor signs were hung. The track was open this week. Signage was hung along on the fence. And I just want to make sure the public is aware that public entrance for the track, when there are no school events or classes taking place, is at the southwest corner of the athletic complex. And we ask that you use the turnstile on there.
That's near the tennis courts, though?
The southwest corner is right off of Washington.
Near Hollywood House.
Near Hollywood House.
Correct. Tennis courts. The tennis courts have been paved. and striped, and the students should be able to use them for the first day of practice Monday of next week, weather permitting. Landscaping and cleanup is now what's taking place, so you'll see them dropping off truckloads of black dirt and moving that around, and you'll also see them beginning to do all the weed pulling and weed whacking, trim, tree trimming, and planting the new bushes along Hollywood Avenue. So the entire thing should be completed by this weekend, and we're already looking to schedule our first punch walk-through next week, at the end of the next week sometime. The roof work, they're working till the crane and everything should be off-site by this weekend, probably by Friday, weather permitting. They added a second crew last week just to make sure, we did over sixty thousand square feet of roofing, so it was a major roofing job, but to make sure all that's installed, there may need to be a week or two of some additional metalwork and roof ladders and some things like that, but that doesn't impact school or traffic floor or anything, that's just having a few guys on the roof buttoning down the final pieces to the project. In regards to our overall budgets, for this roofing project, which is the new project, we had a seventy-five thousand dollar allowance, and today, I think we approved like four thousand in change orders that, you know, we had to replace some plywood sheeting and some roof decking over the project, so we should have, this project should definitely come in under budget without using a good chunk of our contingency money for the roof project. In regards to the tennis court and parking lot project, there was an allowance of seven hundred thousand, because remember that was everything for the track, the turf, the stadium, the bleachers, the tennis courts, parking lot, and so out of that seven hundred thousand, I believe going into this project, we had roughly two or three hundred thousand, and as of this morning, we're at roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand remaining. So when that project's all complete, we should be under budget for that as well and still have at least twenty, twenty-five percent of our contingency money left over. And there were some big chunks, so the board remembers, out of that seven hundred thousand, we replaced the entire under stone and panel drains underneath the turf once we ripped it up, so that was a two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar change order right off the bat. But overall, knock on wood, things will be running smoothly, and we should be wrapping it up and be ready to go by Monday.
So before our next board meeting, maybe we can have a walkthrough?
Absolutely. No prob, I could've turned the tennis courts lights on tonight and we could've walked out there.
I know, it's so awesome.
The parking lot lights are probably, will be on, they're LED, so the additional work of having that electric on.
Crazy about those tennis pads.
That's right, we don't want the tennis lights on.
The tennis lights.
But the, the additional electrical conduit was laid, so if we ever implement charging stations, all the change orders and stuff are done.
How much did that end up being?
It was under ten.
Under ten.
It was like four, four or six thousand, something of that nature.
Okay.
And I have that specifically laid on the allowance document, I'll bring it when the project's done and the CM reports out. We have one final piece, in order to meet the drainage and all the flow and stuff, you'll, when you walk out down Rockefeller, where the parking lot is, you'll see the southwest, the south side of Rockefeller, which is the sidewalk side, you'll see that there's, you know, it was sloped, and that was to meet the drainage off the parking lot on both sides. And so the way the parking lot elevation is to the sidewalk, there is a larger curb, so after our walkthrough construction meeting today, we're gonna put a small forty-two inch fence along the top of that curb, so we don't have kids skateboarding on that curb, or people jumping off that curb, or walking in between cars, so, but I would imagine that will be, that will be completed hopefully by Monday or Tuesday next week. That is the only outstanding change order or cap that I have left. So, coming to a close, and I sent some quotes to the landmark and provided them information so the public's aware that the track's open and that project's coming to completion, and that we're excited for all the stakeholders to reap the benefits of this project for the next several decades.
Do we have cameras on the track or that? I mean, we do have the rules, right, no bicycles, no roller blades, no dogs.
Yes, all that's been posted, and we do have security cameras.
Okay.
Now that are off, one's off the stadium, one is off the concession stand, and we have one going off the auto shop so that we have camera angles, and the police also have access to those cameras watching the tennis courts, the parking lots in Rockefeller.
Okay.
Good?
I think it might be worthwhile, depending on, what'd you think, Kevin and the board? If, we can have a final summary of this project?
Absolutely, I would plan on bringing, once we're signed, sealed, and all punch lists and stuff, I think it'd be good to bring in Carrie and Joe. That will probably somewhere, sometime in September, once you get through all the punch list items, but that would be an opportunity for them to wrap that up and then provide us kind of an update on where we're at with this remaining one point nine, two million life safety money.
Correct.
Because that would be, hopefully, one of the last projects we gotta do. And then one of the questions that was submitted by the landmark that I responded to, but between the roof sections that have been done over the last three years, and some of the new roofs that were installed, when they, you know, did the field house and the wing, the new science wing and stuff, the school district should be good on roofs now for the next twenty, twenty-five years. So that's something that we shouldn't have to worry about budgeting for, except for just general maintenance for the next two decades. And that's, we've had a history here, all six years that I've been here, we have leaks in some classroom or somewhere, so that's a, that should be a good, good use of public funds. That was a good use of public funds. Okay?
So, any other comments or questions? Already tentative budget?
Oh, we are.
Okay.
So, Scott's gonna give you a presentation tonight, and then I'm gonna close that presentation when we get to the final two footnotes, but more or less, the Board of Education approved the tentative budget in July. That tentative budget showed a projected deficit of five ninety. So we are down now in August to three forty-four. We've cut roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand. And so what Scott's gonna show you tonight are the proposals that were, the proposed changes that the administration is recommending. Now, this is not something the board has to take a formal resolution on, although it shows up on the action sheet, we just more or less wanna get a straw poll that, yes, these are all good things, and go ahead and put them in. So when you see the final budget in September, it would have the updated deficit of three forty-four and all the changes that we're showing you. Scott would put these in after today's meeting, and then updated budget would be posted online, and it would have a new footer or header on it that shows it's, the tentative budget as of August ninth or tenth, whenever he posts it. So what I ask is that, let Scott discuss the proposed changes, and when he's done with that, I wanna address one question I received and kinda put a little color to the budget.
So to try to make it easy and able to view it, I broke it down into revenue and expense. So we'll start with the revenue, obviously, the big thing here would be our tax appeals. We do budget roughly four hundred and twenty-five thousand in there, looking at historical trends as far as what type of tax appeals we've paid out, it looks like we're able to drop that down to three twenty-five on that, that's where you pick up the hundred thousand right there on the revenue side, general state aid.
So Scott, so that they understand this, it's, we used to budget four twenty-five, the tentative budget just from one line item, because you had it in two places?
Yes.
The tentative budget they saw in July was three twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Your recommendation is now to take that one line item down to two twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, so, 'cause I don't want someone, what you just said, it doesn't match up with what's on the paper?
I understand.
Okay.
That strictly was for the ed fund, that's where we have the most money set aside, it's our biggest fund that we have, and that's where most of the appeals would come out of, so that one line item is the one hundred thousand.
Okay.
The next, the next big one on there is general state aid, being that the state is kinda in limbo here with what they're gonna pass with the budget, on that is ninety percent of what we collected from FY seventeen, which puts us at one point three million on there, twenty-eight thousand dollars right there on that line item with it, that's taken a pretty conservative approach on that.
Okay.
Special ed, room and board, this one, I looked into to try to figure out, how do we get reimbursed on this one? This is based off of how many students are outplaced within the district, this fluctuates between two and three students, after looking at historicals, this could be increased on that to pick up an additional fifty thousand on that based off of historical.
So this is still conservative?
Still conservative, yes it is.
But it's closer to what we received over the last three years?
Mm-hmm.
It's an additional fifty thousand in revenue.
And then the last revenue source that we looked at was our rentals. Last summer kinda took the conservative approach, being that the main gym was being renovated with the new floor and new bleachers, didn't know really what to account for as far as rental usage on it. After looking at the actuals, and kinda thinking, okay, we missed out on a couple tournaments that hopefully we could get, we can get those in there and increase some revenue there, so there's an increase from what the tentative budget was at eighty, that was presented in July, to ninety-five here for a fifteen thousand dollar increase.
So, overall, just in revenue, we found an additional two hundred and three, two hundred and five thousand.
May I interrupt on this?
Sure.
There's a simple question. Going back to the first thing, the tax appeals, so why is that considered revenue?
It, it's just weird because the treasure, the Cook County, although it's an expenditure to us, Cook County Treasurer's Off, or our proviso, township treasurer's office takes it out of our revenue before we get our property tax receipts. So when we get the property tax receipts, if we collect a million dollars, and they only give us seven hundred, they'll show a negative three hundred thousand for property tax appeals, but they do that under the revenue, so just to keep our accounting consistent.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
So in other words, we're thinking that the property tax appeals will now be, we're gonna lose two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, we, we.
First, three twenty-five.
Cur, well, we originally, last year's budget, we had four twenty-five, and now we're taking the budget down to three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five.
So probably, he could, he probably could include in his footnote, overall, it's, we're going from four twenty-five to three twenty-five total, correct?
Mm-hmm, through all funds.
Through all funds.
And we, we're also now looking, working with our attorneys and looking with the open appeals, right, and having a better picture of the open dollars, right?
We looked at historicals, we paid out a hun, over a hundred and fifty-something last year in tax appeals, we have roughly a hundred and seventy open, so what I did with that is basically, we know we have a hundred and seventy open, and then not to mention any that we don't know of, so that's why we use like almost double of one seventy, close to three forty, three twenty-five.
And there is a report in the tentative budget from our legal counsel highlighting what's open and possibility of appeals that are out there.
The, when you go through the expenditures, I told Scott, just for the sake of time, to highlight the big items, so the ones that are in parentheses are actual changes, Scott? And if there's no parentheses, if something we had to correct and add money back, correct?
And add money, yes. A lot of these, we're going through and looking at our clubs, our activities, the sports, I wanted to make sure that every single one was captured per what was in the collective bargaining, there was a little bit of moving on that, where I had to account for every single organization, every sport that's in there. Crossing guard, we had to add a little bit more per the settlement agreement with the Village of Brookfield, and then of course, I looked through the different contracts that were out there to try to see, okay, did I account for what the anticipated amount would be for FY eighteen? So a couple of those were adjusted with the copier and the postage machine. As far as the board, looking at some of the items that the board has, we looked at legal and some of the professional services, and dropped those down, hoping that with the lawsuit kinda behind us, we won't be spending as much on legal, and then also with some of the professional services that were offered last year, dropped that down a little bit to gain some money, or lower those expenditures. Looking at another big item was our transportation for Ladsy. I knew there was going to be a six percent increase for Grand Prairie, didn't know where the actuals were gonna come in, so with the reduction from the tentative budget on that, that's ten percent from, a ten percent increase from our actuals from seventeen, hopefully that will be enough in case there is a transfer that comes in that needs to be added to a special route to cover that, so that was a reduction there from the tentative budget to what the proposed change is. I had a bill in that wasn't in the original tentative budget, the building administration performance incentives, those are spread out over various accounts to represent wherever they're being billed out, the administrators are being billed out, so it will be in different areas, but it is clearly marked as school performance incentive in the tentative budget.
Last year, that was the first year that the board provided small bonuses to the building administration for achieving their goals on the district and board goals, the, so that was not budgeted under their salary, we did receive a question for that. So now, their salaries are budgeted as one line item, and their potential earnings and incentives are budgeted as well, so just to make sure that's accounted for, that was implemented.
The other, the other major item that still may fluctuate is the certified salary, depending on how the final staffing moves here, it may move from science to another department, so you may see at the next one, a shift in that salary depending on if another additional FTE is needed, but as of right now, it looks like there would be a point three FTE unused to bring down that reduction in the science area. It may not be for science, so I don't want anyone thinking that, hey, we lowered FTE in science, it's just there as a placeholder, and if it needed to go to a different department, it will be taken out of science and put into the correct area out there, if, once that is determined with final staffing.
So in July and August, Kristen provides you with like a staffing chart, so we had like point seven of a teacher, or point seven FTE unallocated for, we're assuming based on our transfer trends that we're gonna need probably at least a point four of that, so that point three, if we don't get full transfers or have any conflicts, we should be able to, you know, reduce by about a point three FTE that's unaccounted for, which is a sixteen thousand dollar savings.
Can I ask, why do you have for Quest Satellite, why is it under revenue and expenditures? For the services provided other district?
Being that it kinda offsets it, you know, that's the price that we pay out, and then we bill the satellite schools for it, so then it looks as if.
It's a wash.
It's a wash.
Okay.
Right, the way that we had to do the intergovernmental agreements.
Out of agreement with it.
Because all the feeder schools pay us, we pay one lump sum to Quest, and then they reimburse us.
Reimburse. There were some questions submitted, one of the tricky things.
Scott, are you going into the questions from Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Before you get into that, let's stick on this page for a second, because this is important. So we've already lowered the, I'd like to answer the, one question I wanted to answer in close from this piece before you get into any general questions. We've already lowered the projected deficit to three forty-four, put two footnotes in on the bottom. We're budgeting at a ninety percent rate for GSA. Last year, we received one point four, four, it was almost another hundred and forty thousand. So if we come in at the same rate we did as last year, who knows right now, because it's relying on the state, but if we come in at another hundred and forty thousand, like we did this year, that would take our deficit to two hundred. If we get only the hundred and seventy tax, the hundred and seventy thousand in tax appeals that we know are open, that's another hundred and fifty thousand we pick up. Now, I only put down in this footnote sixty, being conservative, say we get something we don't know, but that's another, let's say sixty, let's say another hundred thousand roughly, that would take our deficit only to a hundred thousand. Third thing that I don't have on there, that I worked through some things today, is we're budgeting property tax collection at ninety-eight and a half percent. We got additional money in July that really should've been applied to last year, but because we're on a cash basis with the treasurer's office, even though it was for the FY sixteen taxes, it will sit in our budget for this year. So if we get our property tax collection at ninety-eight and a half percent, we'll have this additional money that we received, we'll actually have a small surplus. So, Wes submitted a question to Gary and myself, he asked me to look at five things I could do to try to get this to a balanced budget. Three of those things are revenue sources in regards to the general state aid, the property tax appeals, and the property tax collection rate. The other two expenditure items that we could reduce, or that are, that are two big parts of our budget that we can't reduce at this time to balance the budget, our personnel and program. So what makes that weird is that under the tenure laws and under staffing laws in Illinois, you have to make staffing decisions in March, right around when you're first starting the budget process. So you won't know, that's what kinda, for people that are just getting new into the Board of Education business and school funding business, the state doesn't pay their bills on time, yet they want us to make staffing decisions six months before we get our payments. We don't approve our budget till September, even though we're three months into our new fiscal year. In Cook County, which is different from DuPage and Lake, they release the property tax dollars kinda on a random schedule, we don't just get it all at once. So, it looked, I don't know if anybody remember, but when Tim Walsh had the question in the July meeting, well, it looks like we only collected ninety-four percent of our property taxes for last fiscal year. On July seventh or eighth, we get a five hundred something thousand dollar check from the county for the rest of those taxes, so we really collected close to a hundred percent, but now that money's gonna apply to this year, you know, even the audit, even though the auditor will accrue it back to last fiscal year, it's sitting in this year's budget. So I mean, there's some moving pieces here.
Well, it's good for us, though, this year.
It's good, and so what I'm trying to say to you is, I looked at this, I even sat down with the auditor and Scott today and said, I can go and present this budget to this board and put one four million in there, I could put a hundred and seventy in tax appeals, I could put a hundred percent of tax collection and show you probably still a small surplus, no deficit, but I'd rather prepare you for a worst-case scenario than on June thirtieth be sitting in front of you saying, okay, property taxes didn't come in, tax appeals came in high, and state aid didn't come in, we actually have a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, you know, I, so I'm trying to show you worst-case scenario. I know some of your neighbors or people in the community are like, hey, he's trying to pass the deficit budget, and that's why I wanted to touch on these footnotes with you. If all comes to fruition, we should be right at a balanced budget or a very small deficit, maybe even a small surplus, but I think it's better for us to take a conservative approach than to be banking on all these revenue sources that we haven't seen yet or know if we're gonna get, and then end up spending that money before we have it. And so, if I had to give you those five items of how to get this to a balance, three of them are revenue, and we probably could get there if I just put it all in, but it's, it's taken, it's, it's, I wouldn't run my house like that, I mean, you know what I'm saying? You know, so it's kinda like spending your bonus before you know you're gonna get it. You know, Clark Wizwell bought the pool and he didn't get it. Right? At the Jelly of the Month Club, right? So, a little love it for you, but, I also wanted to start preparing the board and the community and the teachers, like, we are running close to either being surplus or deficit. If all things, all stars align, we're still at, you know, we don't have any hidden money or money trees out there or things in, and so we need to make sure we're making smart fiscal decisions going forward. If we, if the state funding and some of this stuff doesn't come through, this board will have to start looking at staffing and programming items, you know, after the first of the year to prepare for next year's budget, FY eighteen, or nineteen's budget. I don't think we're there yet, I think we gotta wait and see what happens with the state funding and rounder, property tax appeals, we'll have some historicals again, we'll see if that's another area that comes in generous, it's, so, I understand the concern. So I understand the concern, I understand the community concern, because that's one thing I've prided myself on while being your superintendent, is having a balanced budget. You know? What gets weird is we balance, we put these budgets in and like last year, we said we're going to have a small surplus. Scott's first year, I think the board approved the FY17 budget was supposed to be anywhere from 10 to a $20,000 surplus. We came in at close to 300,000 or just over 300,000.
Yes.
Right? If we would have got that payment from the county on June 30th, we would have came in at an $800,000 surplus, which is, which is good news, but it shows you there's some flexibility that maybe we didn't have.
And it's the county.
Right. So I can't rely on them because, and so I, I think we're still in a good case. Our fund balances are at 45%. Everything's okay. And I'm showing you a deficit and I'm asking you to approve a small deficit in September, but if everything comes to fruition, we should be a lot closer to, you know, a $100,000 deficit or a $100,000 surplus, it's give or take. It's like a $200,000 swing. But I wanted to lay that out for you so that, and it's on TV as well.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I mean, this is just right over 1%, right? It's 1%.
Correct.
250,000 or 350,000. And you're saying it should probably come along where it would be a balanced, it'll balance itself due to this, you know, the county and the money and the, right?
I mean, three of the biggest things are revenue.
You know, we're getting to the point, I think the point in that conversation was we're, we're right there. And what's going to happen next year? We got more races coming?
Mm-hmm.
We got more, you know, there's no more, there's no more revenue, yet we're going to spend some more.
Correct.
What are we going to do next year except for, you know, that 1% is going to be, 1.5% is going to be 2%.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that's not a, that's not, you wouldn't run your house like that either.
Correct. This board will definitely have to keep that in mind after January 1. Now, historically, the way we would, one thing that does happen in education is that you, you know, teachers are on a set years of service unless you get someone that wants to go early or something, a change happens. You know, a teacher at near the end, top of the scale ends up leaving and you hire somebody new at a different part of the salary structure. And we specifically negotiate, during negotiations, worked with the teachers unit to identify, you know, over the next 10 years, what the retirement rate would be in teachers eligible for retirement. So the next year or two, you're right, that 1% could become 2%. But then in year three, it should go back towards the 1% mark, because we already have had teachers that are at the top of the scale, have put in for retirement, and will start getting on their final retirement contract. And those teachers will start coming off the books, and as you hire new people out of college, there should be a shift in expenditures there.
Assuming we don't have an increase in students, we'd have to hire more teachers anyway.
Correct. Or if you did have an increase in students, by losing a teacher that's retiring at the top of the scale, you could actually hire two for the same price as the one.
Two for one.
Right.
And address that need without having to pick up additional expenses. It's a good point. Exactly what you're bringing up is what, we have to be cognizant of, absolutely.
We've got to get ahead, you know, we've got to talk about it now instead of next year, we're like, oh, why is it 2.5%?
Absolutely.
You know? And, and we know we've got a bubble of more students coming. And then my, and I know Gary's told me that it's going to level off, but not for a little while.
Well, this year, I believe, I think it's either next year is the level off point. But even this year, if you look, we're projecting 16, even on Kristen's sheet, we're projecting 1636. Right now, we're at 1580. So even if, the way, the simple math for the, that the board that I've always kind of used is for every 30 kids, you're basically, 30 to 35 kids are looking at a teacher. Because those 30 kids got to take five classes, a teacher teaches five classes, so. And we got a .7 of extra staffing already available, so we're okay right now. We may even have a little extra that we can reduce without having to riff or lay off anybody. But the point you're bringing up is an excellent point, in that we need to be cognizant that we're looking at about a 1% deficit. We want to make sure it doesn't continue to grow and add up that chart, we can start to bank it down.
So Kevin, in terms of your advisory councils, who would take the lead of that at the start of the year? Would it be finance or personnel, just thinking about possible personnel or program changes?
I would provide recommendations to the board and the finance council, and then we discuss them, we troubleshoot it with the building administration. And then we would bring them back to the Board of Education. To the, to the board members that have been on since my tenure here, I've already went through a lot of those with you. You know, we've made a concerted effort to try to lower class sizes over the last four years. So if we want to keep core class sizes small, the, then, you know, a way to address personnel issues, considering that's 80% of your budget, you have to look at class sizes in non-required courses or how many electives you allow students to take. You have to look at engagement. So, I mean, we got to make sure we're not going backwards off of exactly what we did over the last four years to kind of rebuild everything up from 2011, right? So I think a lot of this will become clear before the holidays, when we know what's going on with state funding, we know what's going on with pension shifts, we'll know what's going on with our property tax appeals. We should be able to get some of this under, you know, control. Because like I said, last year, if you look at that money, even though it's not going to be accrued, we really finished that year with an $800,000 surplus. That itself is almost like 3%. So.
I think from the long-term perspective, we don't want to get in the hole that we got in last time.
Absolutely.
Which is basically asking the taxpayers to bail us out, you know, after running these huge deficits. So I appreciate your looking forward, Kevin.
And I hope the board understands my, my logic. I'd rather show you doomsday and present something better than to be sitting here in June and saying, well, we didn't get this, we didn't get this, and that's why we're short 700 or 800,000, and it looks like we, it looks like I was irresponsible or the administration was irresponsible. And I don't, I don't think that's how you want to run this district or are paying me to run the district, so.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate it as well. I know deficits make people uncomfortable, but I think you're being fiscally responsible by recognizing the uncertainty and planning for it. Because saying that it's going to come out even is simply not the realistic situation in education. It's ignoring the fact that there is such great uncertainty. And while, I mean, I am, I am comfortable overestimating our expenditures and underestimating our revenue because of what you just said, then you don't have that situation where you're like, oh, whoops, sorry, now it's 400,000 deficit. Like, I would rather err on the side of caution, given the extreme uncertain nature of so many of these factors that is just education. It's just, it is what it is. That's the nature of the beast.
We still have some categoricals that we did not receive from FY17 from the state. So if they give us a payment here in August from last year, since we operate on a cash basis with the treasurer, it's going to look like we got an extra 800,000, which really should have been put to last year.
It's very hard that we live within our means and the state does not meet its obligation on a regular basis and continues to fall short percentage-wise to schools across the state of how much they're paying of their obligation, right? So we do our best to live within our means, but yet the state is not giving what they, what they promised.
And the staff gets it from, we take, you know, we take some grief from the staff because at the same time, we're, we're going through with a fine-tooth comb on their budgets, on personnel decisions, making sure they're exactly 27 to 1 or 20, you know? And all of a sudden, then they see a $500,000 surplus or 800, you know? Wait, that could have been a few more supplies, or that could have been half a teacher more. So I get it from both ends and I understand everybody's perspective, so.
Well, I know, I, I mean, I, I work for companies and they're like, look, it's tight and this is that, and you got to cut 10%. So I understand where the, you know, the staff's coming from too, because we're, we're trying to watch that also. But, you know, and, and my concern with my uncomfortableness maybe is a little bit of, I don't really understand it, whereas money fluctuate comes from, you know, June to September, you know?
Right.
Or however that plays out. And then, you know, we're, I'm looking at, I was like, you know, we, we, we haven't been running deficits, right? You haven't, you haven't done that.
Four, five, four years, five years, yeah.
Right. And we did prior to that and we got, it wasn't.
Got bad fast.
And it got bad fast, right? So we just don't want to get back there.
And not that it makes it right or wrong, but on any given day in this state, over 50% of the schools are running a deficit because of the way that funding just.
Well, I think we would all agree that the state of Illinois is not run very well. But, you know, that's, that's, that doesn't mean we have to do it.
Well, that's exactly right. We need to set the example.
You know?
That's right.
So I'm trying to do it without causing a panic. I'm cognizant that the board wants me to be fiscally responsible, and I think my track record has shown that in my first six years. So I wanted to just kind of help decompress, you know, even to help you with your neighbors, like, hey, it looks like a $300,000 deficit, but he's probably got 300 or 400,000 unaccounted for revenue because of the state's situation that would make it balanced. So it's an easy answer for you.
I think this kind of ties into Liz's presentation, though, when we think about maybe going with an option that gives us the greatest flexibility.
Right.
Given the extreme uncertainty, given the state, you know, and S B one, which you're saying.
You're also going to run into that.
Ties together.
Well, you have to manage your money. You can't just borrow your way out. And it maybe appears like we would be trying to do that. And I, and I don't, I don't know if I'm very comfortable with that either. I mean, I want a baseball field more just about as much as anybody else, so.
Well, the question becomes.
I'm all about getting that money for that.
The question becomes, how close to kids do you want?
Yes.
Do you want these things to get, right? I mean, already historically, since this, the ship has been righted, that was done. There have been a lot of cuts that were not close to kids. So now as we get down this road further, you know, you don't want to, you don't want a deficit spend, but then do you want 40 kids in a class? What, there's.
Well, that's, that's where we have to go back to the public and say, maybe it's time to get more money, right? I mean, there, there is.
But if you could get, if you have money.
I mean, we didn't pass that previous. No one wants a tax increase. We're taxed pretty heavily, but no one wants 40 kids in class. So let's talk about what, what are our options? If that's the option, the doomsday, then I think they would spend 35 more dollars.
Well, one of the options we have without having to go all the way out to referendum and everything was that 3C1. So that we don't have to cut classes or have 40 in a class if we get a shift or if we have higher tax appeals than we expected this year. Because it is a, it's a reassessment year. If you've got the little letter in your mailbox, we may get more this year than we anticipate. So maybe this year, our expenses might spike a little bit, so that little extra money will help ride the spike till we come level out.
We got some time to think about it, you know, but.
Let me just throw a couple comments out there. You know, we, at least Laura, John, myself, Sam have been on the board. We've always promoted the fact that, you know, we need to control what we can control. And the expense side of it is what we can control. The revenues, because again, playing with the state, playing with the timing issues that Kevin and Dr. Stinkus said, is a difference, is a different animal. So we've always conservatively, been more conservative on the revenue projections, and we've always scrubbed the expense side pretty well. And, you know, and, and as, as you, if you, if you've watched our board meetings, you know that we sometimes go and look at details on, on a, on a $1,000 check or a $300 check to see what's being paid out. So it's, this is a continuation of it. It's just that as, as the years have progressed, that, that, that revenue to expense spread has again narrowed and narrowed. And it's just this year now, especially with the fact that we just don't know what's happening with state aid specifically, is that it's coming to a deficit this year. So the key going into this year, because we've already made a commitment with personnel, is, is to make sure that those expenditures don't get out of line and we continue focusing on the expenditure side of it. And as, as Dr. Stinkus said, we'll have to revisit the administration and the, and schools' vision of what they want from personnel. And if we need to revise that, that vision, we may need to revise it going, you know, going for next year.
Scott, you had some general questions submitted, I mean, cognizant of the time. Are there, just hit on some of the big ones or some of the summary ones?
Okay. As we were talking with the state, I do want to just say that it's kind of difficult to really project what our grants are going to be. Allotments change from year to year, carryover money comes in at different points. So when you're putting these grants together, I put in placeholders, not knowing exactly what our allotment's going to be. This year at the state, we had some turnover with different grant administrators. So when you submit your grant, something that was approved the previous year may not be approved this year, so expenditure, expenditures change. So it is kind of hard to kind of budget what items are going to be in with the various grants. I do have placeholders in the tentative budget out there, based off of what our allotment was from FY17, so I wanted just to carry them over into FY18, so I have a placeholder. Now, as things change, you may see items moving forward that may not have a budget item, but will be expended out of it. And that all depends on what the grant administrator approves and based off of what programs will be needed within the school. I want to touch on the athletic department with putting in the paid service, the supplies, and the dues and fees. It was a slight increase from what the previous way was, being in, each individual sport had its own supply account, paid service, and dues and fees. Just want to let everyone know that there is a slight increase at $650 total amongst that.
I think we're okay with that.
I just wanted to mention it. And then the last thing is, I went through various line items just to see where different people were billing, being billed out of, because there were some obvious ones that were over budget and some that were under budget. An example would be non-certified staff being billed out of different accounts. One being billed out of a security account that should have been be billed out of an assistant principal account. So I went through and kind of adjusted those so that in the FY18 budget, it will be correct with it. It won't look so skewed with being over budget, under budget. And that was the main, the main questions. I just wanted to hit in general on those.
We fixed all the formatting, so both revenue and expenditures compare budget to actuals and budget to budget?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the budget? I hope they clarified some things for everybody.
They did.
All right. Payment of bills, Dr. King.
Okay, so new motion, or new business, payment of bills. Need a motion on this?
What page are we on?
181.
181, thank you. If I get there, I'll read it. Okay, it is resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District, High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the August 8, 2017 Board Agenda, Agenda Packet.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Gina. Any discussion?
There's some questions submitted. Scott, can you cover a question?
Sure.
Just give the page number.
Okay. Board book page 186, Blue Cab. This is transportation costs associated for McKinney-Ventle student to attend extended school year. Board book page 187, Displanes Valley Region, local share. This is the district's local cost to match for our career and technical education grants, which is the Perkins and the state CTEI. That is our local share in order to get the grant funds. On board book page 187, E2 Services, Aruba Power Supply. This is the cost to replace, install, and configure a new wireless controller for the school. school. We were maxed out on that, and it needed to be replaced in order to handle the additional Chromebooks coming on for the one-to-one initiative. Board Book Page 189.
That handled the rest, because that'll be, next, next year will be at all four, four grades with the Chromebook, wireless controller.
It should handle it.
It'll handle the.
This was a pretty big upgrade on it.
Okay.
Then the next one would be an even bigger one. I think it went to a terabyte or something like that to handle with it, so.
Well, everything's a wireless, so.
My counters was pretty diligent in getting that order.
Page 88, you're on now.
189, Grand Prairie Transit. Transportation costs associated for our special education students to attend extended school year.
That's something that we put in for reimbursement?
Yes, that's part of the, the claim.
Okay.
Board Book 189, HOH Water Technology. This is boiler lubricant to maintain the heating system. I buy this every couple of years just to do preventative maintenance on our boilers.
What item was it? Where was that, 189?
189, HOH Water Technology.
Okay, I'm sorry.
$594.
$594, okay.
Okay, Board Book Page 191, Oz Engineering. Oz Engineering does all the testing of our pavement, our concrete, the tennis court surfaces to make sure that the compression and everything is per what it says, per the description. It's basically a, making sure that what's going down is adequate, and it's gonna last for the district's standards.
So when we discovered that this wrong stone was put under the football field where it was disinstalled, the recommendation I provided to the board when we completed that project was we have a third-party consultant serving to check every piece of asphalt, stone, concrete. So they, we pay them separate of the architect and engineer to make sure if you're getting the right stone, we're getting the right concrete, we're getting the right asphalt. So every time they pour something, they come out, they take a tube, they test it for us.
Right.
Checks and balances.
Right, you know, trust, verify, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay, Board Book Page 192, Riverside Public Schools for a standard wedge and sliding board. These are just costs associated with a student coming from District 95, coming over here for their needs.
96.
Or, is it 96, sorry?
I, I don't quite understand that.
It's gonna be a special needs student. And their, and their assistive.
Technology.
Equipment.
Equipment.
For a restrictive environment.
Riverside School District.
Yes.
So we're buying it from them to use it here. Are there any other ones?
Um, that was for the board payables, the other ones were on the checklist thing.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about.
So that's all of them, then, right, Scott?
That's all on the board, on the board payables.
All right, the checklist thing we went through already?
No, that would be coming up.
Okay, we'll go to them, buddy.
Okay. Mileage reimbursement for Morgan, this is reimbursement for age group gymnastics. This expense is offset by the revenue generated by the program, no cost to the district. And then postage, we prepay $5,000 at a time for our postage, and it stays on our machine, and then when it gets down to about 100 bucks, we replenish.
How long does that usually last?
It all depends on the mailing, as far as if there is a whole-school mailing that goes out. It, it might be replenished three times throughout the course of the year.
So our budget's roughly 15,000?
15,000.
And Kristen is already, Ms. Matana's already working on for second semester, trying to go with digital report cards, since we're a one-to-one school.
Sweet. Love that idea.
There was no further questions submitted.
Good job, Scott.
Any other questions, then? So we can go for the vote?
Yep.
Mary Ann, please? Yes?
Ms. Turner? Yes.
Ms. Resco?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich.
Yeah.
Okay. Transfer funds and working cash to capital projects. So we need a motion. It's on page 203, I believe?
It is.
Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby authorizes and directs the school treasurer to make a transfer in the amount of $425,000 from the working cash fund to capital projects fund as presented in the August 8, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Wes, second's that. Do we have any questions or discussion? Okay, we can go for the vote.
Ms. Turner? Yes.
Ms. Resco?
Yes.
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 Mr. Rich?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, the next item in the agenda are the matters for closed session. Okay, items for discussion include personnel, student discipline, and individual student matters, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Seth?
We don't have to do an agenda yet.
Any other visitor comments?
Okay. Visitor comments. I see no other visitors. Bob?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay. Notice, okay, and discussion items? I don't think we added any, did we?
Nope. And then consideration of future agenda items, if anybody has any.
Does anyone wanna add another agenda item?
For the future.
I think we had a decent discussion about the budget tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, closed session, page 207.
There.
Motion.
Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second.
Second, Wes. If I may ask a question, is this a new, did you supercharge this motion?
Did you supercharge this motion? I think the attorneys might have supercharged it.
Attorney might have supercharged this. Okay. We can go for the vote then?
Ms. Resco?
Yes.
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 Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yeah.
Okay, Gary, thank you.
Gary, we'll call you back in about eight to 10 minutes.
All right. 10 minutes to get downstairs. Thank you.
Yeah.